First item is approval of February 12th, 2024 public hearing minutes. Any comments on those?
I move to approve those as submitted.
Motion, your second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is approval of the February 12th, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Any comments on those?
I'd again move to approve them as submitted.
All right. All right, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. First agenda item tonight is signage for smart self-storage on Bavaria. Come on up.
Hello?
Good evening. Get your name for the record.
Steve Cressy.
So we've got signage in front of us tonight. Mr. Frans, I'd like to go over your comments, but talk to Mr. Roderick. It sounds like those issues that you highlighted in yellow and your memo were, it sounds like they were taken care of administratively, if I understand it. Is that correct?
That's correct. Okay.
Go ahead.
My report dated March 3rd. It's the applicant proposing signage, metal panel wall sign. It's about seventy-one point two-three square feet. Ground monument sign, about twenty-six point two square feet. It's just under five feet tall. Two window signs that are about eleven point two-eight square feet each for a total of twenty-two point five-six square feet. The total square footage proposed amongst all the signage is just a hair under one hundred and twenty square feet. The outline in my memo, the various requirements for the signs, the ground sign, the window signage, the percentage is allowed. But most important, section eleven seventy-nine, eleven seventy-nine oh three, have two, does limit the signage to two square feet per linear foot of building frontage. This building is about, has about forty feet of frontage, so it's permitted about eighty square feet total. Therefore, just on area perspective, they're over by just under forty square feet. So that would require either the applicant reduce the amount of signage or go to the board, fill the appeals for a variance to try to seek that. Mr. Westbrook, as you said, the issues that I had mentioned, you said, Mr. Roderick confirmed those were taken care of. Those were the, from the outstanding items from the April 2023 planning commission meeting. I raise that issue because the front of the building and the sign graphic was different than what I thought in the final architecture. So it shook out to be, so it sounds like that's taken care of. And then the remaining items, planning commission should consider whether the metal panel wall sign is acceptable. Recent approvals have permitted raised dimensional lettering. The cabinet style sign, I think it's a plastic cabinet style sign. The commission has required a little more decorative signage for ground signs. From applicants in particular, the bases have been, you know, the same material that the buildings are built out of. And then it required dimensional lettering and, as the signage as opposed to cabinets. And then the planning commission should also require landscaping on the basin side. Now, again, I feel it can be handled administratively. So the main issue though is the area. And so the proceed here has to be reduced or seek a variance from the forms submitted.
Thank you.
Nothing on the sign.
Hey, nothing on the sign.
Okay. So, commission, do you guys have any additional questions? So what's your thought on the size?
So, just to start off, the window signs, I did not realize that they were included with the overall signage. I thought it was twenty-five percent of the window. But I feel I've since then found the definition of a wall in the code and it does state windows are included. So I will remove the window signs, number one. Number two, I guess, is what are we considering by frontage of the building? There's, there's two buildings facing the street. There's this larger building here and this L-shaped building. Both of these are facing Bavaria here.
Do the building you're putting aside now?
So if, and there's, there's two buildings facing the streets. There's a gate in between them, two buildings with a gate there. Would that whole thing be considered the frontage? Both, both buildings?
Is that different than this?
That's, that's the one building. That's this building right here on the right.
And that's where you're putting aside?
Yes.
That's where your definition, your?
Okay.
There was no frontages.
So this other building would not be considered a frontage?
No, it's the, just the building you put aside.
Each building is, is allowed a sign though? Right.
Correct. I have to look at the code, that may be the case.
Okay. So for determining a building frontage, the length of a building wall that faces a public street or contains a public entrance to the uses therein shall be considered the building frontage. So I have two walls and the driveway in between is, gives you access to the uses therein. Because you can't do anything here besides, or without going through that main entrance way. So there's two buildings, entrance right there. And each, each building frontage shall be entitled to the sign area permitted in this chapter. So according to thirty-nine, eleven seventy-nine oh three, section B, or C1, I think there, each building frontage, in the case of irregular wall, a straight line drawn across. And I got seven and a half acres here and I'm dwindled down to one hundred and forty-eight of frontage, which is technically the, the least amount of frontage on this entire street of Bavaria. A forty-five thousand square foot facility, I have a little tiny thing in a front here. So I'm just asking, according to my interpretation of the code, I think both of these walls facing the street should be considered the frontage.
You're only showing signage on one of the buildings though.
Correct. Well, I was hoping that instead of putting them on both, can I combine the allowable square footage, keep it on one building? Instead of having two separate signs? If I'm allowed, say, a hundred square feet, you know, eighty here and twenty here, can I just have a hundred on one building?
You attach the buildings. You could attach the buildings.
They're attached by a gate.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I believe that you're, you, you get, where, where the sign goes is where your frontage is determined. I understand your point that they're very close to one another on the same plane.
Yeah.
It's not the same building. So that's what determines the frontage.
Okay.
What's, what's wrong with two signs, one on each building? What's wrong with that?
I guess I just don't really need two signs. I'd rather have one that's a little bit larger, you know, and my allowable sign space is not, not, when you consider the monument sign and the sign on the building, I don't have a whole lot of space here considering the large area I'm working with and my small frontage of.
Could you ask for a variance? Is that what you could do for that or not?
Sure, there's always administrative relief built into the code.
If you have a variance, you know, you have to go to another court.
Yeah. So okay. Okay, well, I would consider doing that if, I guess, I would have to ask to, first of all, are, are both of these buildings considered a frontage? And if they are, then can I combine the two? Would I need to ask that to BZA or is that something, could do that here, right?
Correct.
Just make that a determination. Okay. I guess I will, I will, I will try that. Moving on from, from that, the sign itself. So this, this is, is not just a flat panel here. This is, this, these letters are dimensional. This is on the top here, wall dimensional letters on, on backer boards. So the, the board sticks out from the building about inch and a half on the wall. The letters are attached to that board. Is that what, what we're looking for?
I think seeing a section of that showing how it would be done, yeah, like a profile of it to better understand it, because it doesn't state that detail on our submittal that you provided us.
So if I did submit something with an inch and a half backer board and dimensional letters, it's not, it's not a lit sign, it's just a solid, solid sign.
So it's a metal panel sign that has raised letters?
Yes.
Bump off the metal?
Yes, yes.
Nugs off the metal? So they're not dimensional letters, it's just raised off of the metal?
They're actually attached to it. They're, they're, they're thick letters attached to, to this metal panel.
Oh, so the, the metal panel is just a backer?
Yes.
And climate-controlled storage are raised dimensional individual letters?
Yes.
I would not have got that from that.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I'm less concerned about the backer, I get more so about the, the letters themselves. So if they're dimensional, probably dimensional letters attached to a metal backer, that seems reasonable if that's the case.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that detail on the drawing.
Do you have that information, like how to?
I think so.
It sounds like that could be dealt with. Hearing some details. Talk about the monuments.
Monument sign, I agree. I come up with a different design on the, on the monument here. Just give you guys some of these. Second page, third page, I guess, second page. New moni-, new monument sign, no more cabinets, no more aluminum. It's, uh, it's built out of brick, masonry. Very similar to my neighbor's. This is, this is my sign with a flat panel, just identical to Coca-Cola sign. Except it's not, it's recessed within the masonry, just like IDR is.
Is that landscaping around?
Yes.
Yeah, he put it on last page, so that's recorded.
Steve, do you have an extra copy of?
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure. Frans, do you have your thoughts on that sign with the, on the, on the second page?
Yeah, just, how come it increased in height to six feet?
What's that?
How come it increased in height to six feet?
Because the sign was, I reduced the size of the actual sign, just put like a masonry border around it. And I want the whole thing to be larger than eight feet, so I just raised it a little bit so.
And that is some kind of, is that a white metal backboard? Is that what it is?
I don't have the exact detail of that yet, honestly. It's gonna be almost identical to what Coca-Cola is. Except, except it'll be recessed into the brick.
Oh, the panel will be recessed?
Yes, yes. If you're looking on the side, you won't see the panel sticking out, it'd be, just like IDR is.
And those are the same, they're individual dimensional letters attached to the panel? Or is it a sign that's?
I would prefer to have just a flat panel sign without dimensional there, if I could, just like Coca-Cola. Same brick that's used on the building is used for the monument sign.
Is it the split face or the smooth?
Split face.
That, that's okay to create that recessed panel?
So the, the area behind the panel will, will not have the recessed, the split face black.
Oh.
Smooth.
Smooth?
Yes.
Is there a reason why you didn't use the smooth masonry?
Because the lower portion of this building is split face, so it was matched with the building.
Well, it meets the height requirements and air requirements, so that's an improvement.
So I, I think, I don't know. Chris, what do you think about the landscaping around it?
I just have a couple of plans I would swap out. The first one is the Japanese maple. I don't think it's gonna do well up there by the street. Those kind of neat protective, shadier areas. So maybe consider doing a, just using red letters. If you're looking for ornamental, sure, with good color. And then the other one was the, oh, I, I was gonna say something about the door parking pushers. I usually don't like how big those get, but I see where you're using it to screen the parking. So I think that one's actually okay. I think that, that'll plenty room to grow. Won't be too problematic. Everything else is okay. There was a plan that I would use, I think, that I heard enough to tolerate conditions.
Okay. I was just gonna say this plan was already approved.
Around the sign?
Yes, this, this, this thing, this exact.
I'd been out of it.
Yeah, you weren't, yes, yes. So I just.
So, okay.
Well, I'm open to, you know, different ideas for, for swapping.
Yeah, the one tree then, just the one maple, I think you can, everything else should be.
I mean, it's, it's approved, it's approved, but you may want to consider.
Yeah, it's just a suggestion for.
So remove the red maple and, what was your suggestion?
It was, it's the Japanese maple. The, the celebration maples are great. Everything else is fine.
So it looks like, I guess if you, when you're, I guess you're, you're gonna go to BZA, I would make a, you know, make an official submittal back again to these guys showing, I guess, could we, could we prove condition on BZA approval? And if he doesn't achieve that, he's gotta come back?
Yeah, I mean, I think you could prove it subject to. I think that'd be fine. I mean, at the end of the day, if he doesn't get a variance, he's just gonna shrink down the lettering, I would imagine.
Yeah. If I don't get the variance, I'm just gonna keep the same sign and just shrink it. So could I be approved with the signage?
Administrative review of that? Would you guys be okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay. And I'll try and make a motion here. Make a, make a motion to approve the sign plan with, with the removal of the window signs to include the ground mounted sign as submitted in the updated plan dated, who's got better?
Two twelve of twenty-four.
Today.
Oh, today? Three twenty? Three twen-, no, that's, that was twenty-three. Uh, the sign, sign plan submitted today, I guess, I'll say. With the mason, masonry monument base and, uh, subject to approval from the BZA or reduction of the sign area to be approved administratively. Sorry. I think it was, it's Lance, was it?
I, I think we're gonna, I don't think we should put those.
Yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Frans?
That sounded great.
Oh, okay, usually you hear something different.
That sounds great.
All right, any more discussion on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
He sent one back there. You got it. Next up is Sephora signage.
What's that?
Jason's pen is lost. These Apple pens don't write so good on paper.
Push harder.
It's gonna be the communal pen.
Need one of those, like clicker ones.
All right, could you name for the?
Brent Smith.
So it's pretty obvious where you're proposing here, so. So we'll just jump into Mr. Frans' comments.
Um, I recommend approval. I mean, the sign is, I appreciate the simplicity and elegance of the sign. It's pretty straightforward, raised dimensional letters. Meets the area requirements of the code. I think it can be approved as submitted.
All right, any more, any questions? Sir Roderick, anything?
No comment.
I have one question. Is the sign gonna be blue and white? Or usually your colors are Sephora are black and white almost.
Yeah, it is, it is black and white.
Oh, it is black? I was looking at a picture of this.
Oh, well, I think, I think the letters are black, you just have boards of blue.
Okay. I see, I see, okay. No, I have, I know for the question.
It's gonna have a white, lit border around it.
All right, someone wanna make a motion? Have some boo. Second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up is signs for Nordstrom Rack. Yours again is, just like the last one, pretty self-explanatory. Mr. Frans, you wanna go over?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Sorry, could you get your name?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, same thing, pretty straightforward. There are more signs in this application, right? This is a corner unit. I think you guys did a nice job taking advantage of, and quite frankly, what we talked about here in the planning commission level with the tower element. And it'd be a nice place for you to have some signage. So did a nice job with that. There's the tower element sign, the primary wall sign, a small blade sign under the canopy sign, which is very common in plazas. And it's similar to what's used in the commons development. In total, there's two hundred square feet of signage being proposed. And then the twelve and a quarter tenant panel sign, twelve and a quarter square foot. Relative to the total amount of signage, we're within the code allotment, which provides up to two hundred and thirty square feet. You can actually get a little more. You didn't hear me say that, but it's a quarter unit. So you do get a little bit more, but it's unnecessary to outline that code provision since you're within the code requirement. So the individual halo lit back channel letters with black aluminum returns, again, very sort of just simple and sophisticated look and would recommend approval at this time.
All right. Sir Roderick, anything?
No comment.
You guys have any questions? Do you wanna make a motion?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next up is Seven Brew. Come on in. Going to see your brother in the area. You have to be able to reach with planning, or reach with council. We won't keep it.
Keep it alive.
Can we get some names for the record?
James Martin asking.
Jordan Burns.
All right, so this is for the lot split. I know there's been a lot of discussion about it. Kind of unusual. And I don't know if, like, what we're thinking, brief or wanna go into comments and thoughts on it?
I can do a quick, you know, kind of background again to refresh on it. So our original submittal, I think back in December, we had a lot size of like twenty-one thousand and some square feet, which of course was required of BZA for that as far as, I'm getting a variance. A variance, I'm sorry. So we went there and were denied that. We then redid the lot split to get to the thirty thousand square feet to meet that requirement. And I believe that was submitted in review and it was called out that that revised one then had issues with the rear and side yard setbacks for both, I think, the ATM and the Tesla stuff. So then we did revise after that again, which I think is what you see for you now, which was just submitted on the twenty-second, I think, February twenty-second for this meeting. Both the lot split and then there's a, a plan with the two that shows where the buildings are and offsets for, I think it's called the site layout plan, which shows the lot split and then the dimensions on that one. And that was revised to, for the rear and side yard setbacks, and you can see the dimensions on there. We have from the, the twenty-five foot off the side of the Tesla enclosure on the one side, twenty-five feet even, and twenty-five point five-six feet to the rear yard of, or the rear of that Tesla enclosure. And then further to the right is the ATM, I guess, enclosure, if you wanna call it, structure. And you can see where we have the twenty-five feet to behind that as required. And then further down, you see the Seven Brew building, which we do have thirty feet side yard on that one. The rear to Seven Brew, you can see there's one dimension of thirty-seven fifteen, which I think that gets to the overhang of the Seven Brew structure. So that also would meet the twenty-five foot setback. So we feel that this meets those requirements that were required. I believe there was a, a front yard mentioned, and as we read the, the code, it says to the, the street line. So we, that's has always met the requirement as we read it. So that's kind of the background to it.
Mr. Frans, you wanna go over here?
I'll just pick up on that last part. So the applicant's references to eleven thirty-three oh two of the plan zoning code specifically, definition twenty-seven, letter B for front yard, which means the yard, means the yard across the pool width of the lot, extending from the main building to the street or lot line. So it's, it's or lot line. And zoning codes aren't set up to air to the applicant. Actually, the way they're set up is the more strict provision always prevails in the zoning code. So with that said, there's, there's just general issues with this, this lot. It's wonky in nature because you're carving out the middle. You're carving out the ATM and Tesla. And I, I get why you're attempting to do that. I can appreciate that dilemma, but it's, you know, you, you, when, as you described the, the side lot line, you said twenty-five feet. I would interpret that as a, as a second front yard, the twenty-five feet for the Seven Brew. And then you have about twelve feet for what I presume to be the standalone cooler unit on the Seven Brew site plan. There's about twelve feet to that slot line. You know, if I look at this, there's at least two front yards and two side yard lot lines on this plan because of the, again, the shape. What I didn't put in my memo, and as I look at this a little closer, I also am concerned as you, as you look at eleven, eleven seventeen, eleven seventeen oh-three B, which is the size, shape, and orientation of lots, um, the, let's call it the stem, if you will, which is, I kind of refer to it as a Pac-Man, but this piece of the lot, width-wise, this substantial piece of the lot doesn't meet the width-to-depth ratio of the code either. So it's, I, I don't see how this lot, uh, conforms to the code, um, and it certainly is creating non-conformities, in my opinion, with existing structures and plan structures. So with that said, I, I recommend this, uh, some sort of request to or zoning appeals for administrative relief take place if, if the applicant isn't able to design the lot in components of the code.
Yeah, thanks Chairman. The, I, you guys have probably seen my memo, uh, the first half of which, uh, generally kind of echoes what Brian was talking about, the shape of the lot. It's highly unusual, creates a lot of questions, uh, I guess. Uh, another one to, to expand upon. What Brian said would be the front pa- front setback that would be created if this proposed, um, parcel were to be carved out, front setback that would be created for the, uh, Tesla building and for the ATM and this other little building. Those may be out of conformance, uh, as well, so I don't know how we get around that. But i- in general, my comments echo Brian's comments, and then the second half of my memo, and I know it doesn't apply directly to the lot split, which is the question before us at hand here tonight, uh, but I just wanted to get some of my traffic concerns, uh, uh, on paper so that everybody's aware of them, uh, going forward. And we don't have to discuss the traffic in great detail tonight. Like I say, I know that's not really the question before us, but I want everybody to be aware, so...
I didn't have anything beyond what Mr. France or Mr. Gilley had to say.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Let me ask you something. Amateur looking at this. What's, what's wrong with moving this whole thing west so you wouldn't have the split lot? Because this one, you have all this traffic coming down from Key Bank and other places, running right into your coffee shop. Why couldn't you move it west right up to the edge of that driveway? Is there something wrong with that? Do you have enough room? Maybe you don't have enough room for thirty thousand square feet, maybe that's it.
Yeah, exactly. If you look at the...
Is that the problem?
If you look at this site plan, you know, this is the main shopping center here.
Yeah.
With the bank on the corner and Hobby Lobby's here and the rest of the stuff here.
Right.
And then you have that smaller section, so, uh, yeah, it's...
There's not enough room? Well, I mean, just looking at this, it looks like there's plenty of room.
Yeah, that's why, you know, the, the site layout is very helpful to see where the buildings are and the, and the curb there, the, the lot split is just...
Exactly, that was said, that there probably wasn't enough room for thirty thousand square feet to go well.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, that's, that was my question.
So I, I don't know if you have anything additionally you want to add?
Yeah, if I, if I could, I, I, we understand the concerns. There's obviously some overlap or conflict between concerns over the site layout and the site plan, which is a different review and approval process, and that's actually being pursued by Seven Brew itself, um, and, and the lot split that, that we're seeking here. We, we, we know there's, there's a relationship between the two, obviously, but with respect to the lot split, I, I think the, the city's planner referred to eleven seventeen oh-three. That's, that, that seems to be the provision of the city's ordinances that really apply to the lot itself as opposed to the, um, the, the site layout. And so there, there's a requirements for dimensions that, that don't a- address, for instance, um, the, the yard requirements that would apply to the site plan itself. With respect to the lot dimensions, there's a reference to conformity to at least the minimum area and width requirements. Those we, we, we believe we do meet. The size, shape, and orientation requirements, again, they're, they're, they're very broad. It's appropriate, they, they, they need, they're supposed to be appropriate to the location of the subdivision and the type of use and development contemplated. And again, not a lot of guidance for you in terms of how you determine that appropriateness, and, and, and James can speak more to this, but, but certainly for the combination of uses here, the Tesla charging station, the, the drive-through coffee, and, and the surrounding uses, we, we think that this is appropriate, um, uh, for, for the location and that mix of uses. And, and frankly, that's, that's really it. The, the, there, there's a requirement, again, with regard to this, um, site plan, for, um, rear and side yards of twenty-five feet. There's a setback line of fifty feet from the right-of-way, um, that's required. We need that, that requirement. With respect to the front yard requirement, again, that applies to the site plan, not to the, um, to the lot split, but, but I think we may have a little bit of disagreement with, with regard to the language there, because the, the yard requirement is, the front lot line requirement is, um, the street or road line of the lot. And then the front yard requirement is the yard across the full width of the lot extending from the main building to the street or lot line. I, I, I heard a comment about the manner in which, um, zoning regulations are to be construed, and the law in Ohio is that if there's an ambiguity, um, they're to be construed in favor of, of the landowner rather than in favor of the city, that's Ohio's import law. Frankly, I don't think there's an ambiguity here, because here it's an or, not an and. And so we, we, the plan, that's a, the, the site plan would meet that front yard requirement. Again, I'm trying to distinguish, because we're not here on behalf of Seven Brew, I'm trying to distinguish between the, the requirements that apply to the lot split versus the site plan.
But that information was attached as part of the submittal that we're all reviewing, so if that wasn't part of what your intent was, then you shouldn't have been provided that information as part of the submittal then, because that's where all of this is stemming from, is kind of what you're saying. So really, if you were just looking to do a lot split, then it should have been a lot split information provided to us and not all of the additional information.
I think, James will tell me if I'm wrong, I think that that information was provided, really in response to the concerns that, that the city planner, um, raised about whether something was feasible, that the proposed use was feasible. But again, it's a separate issue. We're not, if you, if you were to grant our, our application here, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, um, you wouldn't be granting the site plan.
But I think the other problem is, is we're essentially might be creating a lot that is unbuildable at that point.
That's like create problems for the other tenants not being compliant.
It does.
That's the other concern.
I think, Mr. Chair, if you mind, I think what needs to happen here is this needs to be reviewed by our lot director, um, before we can take any action on this, 'cause I don't, I don't feel comfortable making any decisions personally. That's just my, my opinion of it, because I don't feel like, it sounds like with their lawyer being present, we need to have our lawyer review this and, and make a determination as well.
I, I, I agree. Can I ask, you say you're not here to be have a seven brew, so who are you here to be have, or on behalf of the owner of the shopping center, or the DRS?
Well, your lot split specifically calls out your application to the revised lot split plan, drive-through coffee restaurant, so that's how you guys submitted it to us with that information. So you're telling us one thing, but your records show something completely different.
What's the application you're saying was?
I don't know, maybe the application...
The applicant's name is MC eighty-two Development LLC. The plan that you've been provided tonight and in the past is a site layout, document Seven Brew, I believe is what you're referring to?
It does, it requested lot split by Seven Brew, so on the application.
It says for the Seven Brew, that's...
Correct.
For the Seven Brew, not, it's not being submitted by Seven Brew, it's submitted by the applicant, which is MC eighty-two Development, which is related to DOT RS, they're the same basically entity for the property owner, that's what it is.
Okay.
And our requirement is to get the lot split as part of our commitment with Seven Brew, they take care of the site plan approvals, which that's what they're working separately on, to you guys. Our requirement is to get the lot split approved.
Mr. Burns is telling us these are two separate things, and they're not. Because that's what this is saying.
They're, they're part and parcel, they're part and parcel together. I mean, I, I understand your point, you're here for a technical lot split.
Yes, we are.
But this planning commission can't create non-conformities. If you, if your argument is that this lot line that runs parallel on eighty-two is the front lot line, then this must be a rear lot line, which requires twenty-five feet. Well, it's pretty evident, you can't meet twenty-five feet for existing structures, therefore they'd be creating a non-conformity, and they, they cannot create a non-conformity.
I think we, the front line is, is obviously along the street, the rear, the rear, which is under the code, the line, the lot line opposite the front lot line would be the line here.
No. You, you can't pick and choose, I mean, it's...
Well, again, I'm not, I'm not picking and choosing, I'm just, I'm, I'm just looking at the code, which defines the rear lot line as the lot line opposite the front line.
Well, that would be that line right there, opposite the lot line is the lot.
Yeah, I mean, that's, there is some...
Again, I don't feel we can make a determination.
I really would like to, yeah, to get Mark Adeli to, to review this in detail and provide us his opinion on appropriateness of everything. I think you guys have spoken, I believe.
Mark and I actually spoke earlier today, I wanted to let him know of the issues that we saw in, in the analysis here, so that frankly, so that he would have the benefit of his input, you know, he wasn't be able to attend to it.
Yeah, so I would like to get his opinion on, on that. So I don't know about the, the rest of the commission, but I, I'm kind of leaning towards, like to continue this to the next meeting so we can get an opinion from the lot director. So I'm gonna make a motion to c- to continue this to the next, to the, um, April meeting, uh, so we can get an opinion from the lot director.
Second your motion?
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And just, I know Mr. Osborne's hearing everything, and I know it's not yours either, but just to pass on, I guess, you know, uh, Mr. Giladi brought up the, you know, their traffic issues, just pass on, with, with the layout as it is right now, I don't know how I can responsibly approve this with the drive-through being, entrance being right there. I just, that's gonna be a major, major sticking point for me, 'cause I know that the problems that, you know, it backs up past that point, and we're just gonna be causing an issue. So when this does come up for site planner view, just pass on it's gonna be, it's, it's, it's gonna be a major sticking point.
Yeah, I know, uh, again, not, not handling the lot, uh, or the, uh, site plan, not handling the traffic side that wants to, you know, we know those are the concerns, so that, you know, we...
I know they're one of those, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other business on here? I don't think so. Entertainer motion to adjourn?
Motion seconded.
May I proceed, uh, Mr. Wilbersburg?
Yes.
Do you have a couple minutes to answer a couple questions?
I, I do not. I've gotta get to a plant, uh, city council meeting in Beachwood, where his brother is...
Oddly enough, yes.
So...
Any of you can probably answer this question, this question, it doesn't take long to spend time, just, I would like some verification, just to... So I, go ahead, go, I mean, somebody can ask, I can answer, just go ahead.
Is there a quick question? I mean, as a...
Well, not really, I mean, this is not in my wheelhouse. So I did...
I'm sure if, if...
It's not agenda-wide.
What's that?
This could be off the record, this doesn't have to be...
Make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, well, maybe we can help.